I'd like to take this time to go ahead and call the order, the June 3rd, 2025 Planning Commission Work Session.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for your participation today. We have two agenda items, and with time permitting, we'd like to discuss this proposed amendment to the Portsmouth zoning ordinance. And I'd like to ask Ms. Patrice Branch to come forward. She's the staff coordinator for use permit number 2502. It is a request by Coastal Virginia Developers for a use permit for the development of five townhouse units on approximately one half acre of property total located at 430, 436, and 442 Douglas Avenue in the historic residential HR zoning designation. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed residential uses.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Patrice Branch, and I'm a planner with the City of Portsmouth. The application before you today is a request for a use permit for the development of five townhome units on the property located at 430, 436, and 442 Douglas Avenue. The subject properties are in the Port Norfolk Historic Neighborhood and our Zone Historic Residential. The combined acreage of the properties is approximately 0.47 acres, and the properties are currently vacant. The property is located within the AE flood zone in the resource management area of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area, and the surrounding areas consist of residential units. To the north of the subject property are single-family detached dwellings, Zone Historic Residential. To the south adjoins a multifamily residential building containing five dwelling units, also Zone Historic Residential. To the west is a 3.49 acre vacant parcel, Zone Urban Residential, and to the east is a mix of single-family and complex dwellings, Zone Historic Residential. The applicant is proposing to re-subdivide the three existing parcels into five individual lots to construct five two-story townhomes, and approved use permit is required for the townhouse dwellings within the historic, historic Residential Zoning District. Each townhouse unit will be approximately 20 feet in width, or 20 feet wide, and 50 feet deep, with an estimated 2,000 square feet of living space. The townhomes will contain three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. Each unit will have a rear double-car driveway to accommodate the two off-street vehicle parking spaces required for townhouse dwellings. The rear driveway will be accessible via an existing shared access easement from Douglas Prior to obtaining this use permit application, the applicant obtained a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission, which approved the architectural elevations as well as the concept site plan. The submitted front, side, and rear elevation shown here, along with the conceptual plan, are incorporated into the conditions of the approval for the use permit to ensure substantial conformity with the approved design. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the properties as mixed residential. Staff recommends the approval of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. The proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and is appropriate at this location. The development will serve as a compatible infill and will provide a transition between the adjacent multifamily residence to the south and the detached single-family homes to the north. The request also supports the 2020 Portsmouth Citywide Strategic Housing Plan, recommendations related to updating the city housing stock with quality housing. The planning department did receive a comment regarding the proposed property lines that were included in the original concept plan. That was a part of the staff report for this development. The documents have been provided to you. The applicant has also submitted an updated concept plan, so you will see as part on your table, and the documents show an updated condition. And I will stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I asked more.
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay. The next case, Use Permit 2505, was deferred from your May 6 meeting, and it is a request for a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment at 1805 Hodges Ferry Road in the general mixed-use GM zoning district. The property is owned by ARS Enterprises LLC and is further identified as tax map number 595, parcel number 2. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor.
All right. So the next application is UP 2505. It's a request for a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment as part of an existing restaurant located at 1805 Hodges Ferry Road. So 1805 Hodges Ferry Road currently operates as an indoor and takeout restaurant. Solo and dual live entertainment is permitted by right as part of the restaurant use. To offer additional forms of entertainment such as comedy performances, music involving human interaction, an approved use permit for an entertainment establishment will be required to operate within the general mixed-use zoning district. On May 6, the Planning Commission deferred the use permit application at the request of the applicant to allow the applicant the opportunity to submit a revised narrative and meet with the community members of the surrounding neighborhood. On May 15, the restaurant hosted a food tasting and community meet and greet with residents from the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant has also submitted a revised narrative that includes modifications of hours of operation, as well as a revised list of entertainment events. The applicant adjusted the hours of operation for the live entertainment to be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 8:00 p.m. to 11:30 a.m. Additionally, staff has included information on the occupancy load and parking in the memo to address questions and comments raised by the community members. The building official has determined that the maximum occupancy for the building is 125. Furthermore, in regards to the existing improvements on the site that were lawfully established before the adoption of the current zoning ordinance but which does not conform to its current standards are considered legally nonconforming. These nonconforming uses, such as parking, may remain in operations without modification, provided that the use or structure is not expanded, enlarged, redeveloped, terminated, discontinued, or abandoned. While the parking lot or parking spaces may not comply with the current standards of the zoning ordinance regarding landscaping and placement, it is allowed to remain due to its classification as a nonconforming use. Planning staff recommends approval of the applicant's use permit request to operate an entertainment establishment as part of existing restaurants' work conditions. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the subject property as part of the mixed-use corridor. The proposed addition of the entertainment establishment use to the existing restaurant aligns with the goal of the Comprehensive Plan by supporting the reuse of an existing commercial structure building. The property has limited potential for significant redevelopment without consolidation with the adjacent parcel. Therefore, by incorporating entertainment as a complementary use to the restaurant, the property viability as a commercial use is potentially strengthened by the expansion of revenue-generating opportunities. This concludes my presentation, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Okay, commissioners, we know we had a lot of community input on this from last month. I think some of the items were addressed in the comments from staff. Did you all have any additional questions? Yes, sir.
Sure. I have a few questions. I saw in the packet that it said that the planning staff addressed the problems that city council had. Can you just tell us what problems they had?
Were you referring to the ones that were brought up by the community members?
In the packet, they said that, it's not on the public hearing items here.
Were you talking about the conditions that we added? So hours of operation, having them submit a security plan, those were all brought upon due to conversations or things that the city council wanted to see as part of the entertainment?
Okay. So basically the same concerns that we had here.
Yeah.
And do you know if the applicant was able to get in touch with the neighborhood or the civic league and?
The applicant, that could probably speak on it. I do know that they sent out a flyer to, I think it's the HOA Association, regarding their event that they hosted.
Then, the next thing for Mr. Miller, as we mentioned before, do you see any problems with the comments made by Mr. Bates about potential procedure violation or necessity for a new application?
No, I don't. I think we've complied with the notice requirements.
And then, my last item, it's comments from Mr. Porter. They mentioned how the property at 1811 Hodges Ferry Road, they used to have a permit restriction, and it may have changed or been annulled by present owners. Do you all know anything about that?
You said at 1805, where you're talking about the building next door.
I think the building next door. They just mentioned that 1811. They mentioned how city council permit restricted based upon the flinners at the time that both businesses, I guess that's 1811 and 1805, could not be operated at the same time due to limited parking.
Yeah. So when both of these buildings used to be owned and operated by the same person, one was operating as a restaurant, the other building was operated as a catering facility. That was back in '03. 1811 does not have an active use permit. We confirm that with the Commissioner of Revenue because there have not been a business license on file for greater than two years.
Thank you.
You know about the occupation of that building the last two years?
Not that I know of.
That's a lie.
I mean, they don't.
Legally, no one's been occupied.
Oh, okay. I can take that right now.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
So what's the remedy for the parking situation? And maybe this is just going over my head.
I guess what was concerned was it didn't meet the current standards of the zoning ordinance. It's a nonconforming use. That means that the parking was established before our current ordinance, so it's allowed to remain as is without having to be modified.
And how is that not a safety concern? If you're saying 125 people are allowed, or a community's concern, if the occupancy is 125, there's certainly not parking for that.
So the zoning ordinance only requires, I believe it's 13 parking spaces for entertainment establishment. It's usually one per 250 square feet. That's how we determine parking, the number of parking needed for the building. It's not based off of occupancy, it's based off of square footage.
I get that, but in real terms, when you have people come, if they have live music, and let's say 120 people show up, they're all not carpooling.
May I make a comment?
Would you read the condition about parking enforcement?
So, condition number 17 is from one hour prior to the commitment of the entertainment use until one hour after cease of the entertainment use. Parking for the patrons and staff of the establishment shall be strictly limited to on-site parking at 1805 Hodges Ferry Road or other legal privately-owned off-street parking spaces. The use of on-street parking by patrons and staff, including nearby residential streets, shall be prohibited. Their operator of the use shall take all necessary measures to ensure compliance with this condition.
So it is your job recommendation to approve it. Any additional questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I talk to my colleagues?
Sure.
What's the major hesitation about this particular item? I know we talked about the parking and the use, but what is the main hesitation concerning this particular?
So I can give you a summary of, just to summarize what we saw last month. It was around safety concerns, past history with this facility, in part because of parking and overflow into the neighborhoods had been pretty extreme, as stated in the past. The, I think as staff addressed, the nonconforming usage of the parking, the parking predating the current rules on what's allowed, be it the setback or even the number of spots. And even the occupancy itself, I believe, has been adjusted from last month. That's correct, right?
It's the same.
It's the same. Okay. So, and then looking at the occupancy. So, I mean, as with many commercial venues that are that close to residential venues, it's always concern of safety and security. So those were some of the, in brief, some of the concerns of the community. I also would say that the narrative on, and this is going into legally as a definition of an entertainment venue and a nightclub, becomes kind of cloudy, and there is the ability to kind of work between both of those. Even if your intention is on one extreme, you are permitted all the way to the other extreme, because you can't have laws strictly for each individual use. It has to be kind of a range. And I think that brought into some concerns if, though their intentions are one thing, what's to stop them from a year from now, saying, you know what? We can make more money if you bring in this many more residents.
Well, it's understandable that the residents of Green Lakes are concerned that this establishment is going to be open until 12:30 a.m.
Now, that's an improvement, so.
I get that, but.
By law, 2:00 a.m. is typically what you see with a lot of entertainment establishments. And being that they brought it down to 12:30, I think is a considerable improvement, especially considering, even as a restaurant, they can operate, I believe that late already, is that not correct? How late can they operate as a restaurant?
I don't believe there is a prohibition on closing, like the maximum closing time. It's the sale of alcohol.
Sale of alcohol, yeah. Any other questions or thoughts, commissioners?
Okay. We anticipated that we might have significant time in our work session, and so with your permission, we would like to propose or discuss a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance that the commission directed staff to prepare at your April meeting.
That's right. Do we want to do that first, or do we want to go over the?
Yeah, let's finish that. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Mr. Bob Boone, zoning administrator for the City of Portsmouth. Of course, pursuant to Section 15.2, that's 2310 of the Virginia Code, the zoning administrator shall notify the local planning commission of application received for special exceptions or variances. The planning commission may send a recommendation to the board or appear as a party at the hearing. We have three agenda items that are scheduled for a public hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals on June, on June the 23rd. Two of these items requested are special exceptions per the zoning ordinance, Section 40-2, 40.2, 535, subsection B-13, and one is to authorize a reduction of the minimum required parking spaces for the development and innovation overlay district. The second is to authorize reducing the minimum required interior side yard setback to construct a detached, single-family dwelling on a nonconforming lot, 25 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. Along with that would be a variance request for zoning ordinance, Section 40.2, dash 534, subsection B, subsection 2, to authorize a reduction of the minimum required corner-in yard setbacks from 2 feet to 3 feet. The first case is going to be 1825 Prentice Avenue, which is for the variance for the corner side yard setback and for the interior yard setback. The next one is for 901 Enterprise Way, which is a special exception to authorize the reduction of the minimum required parking spaces for development in the innovation overlay district. So those are cases for our June meeting, and you're welcome to send a recommendation to the board if you desire to do so. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Yes, sir.
Hey, Sheriff. I have a question, not about the applications, but more about the process. You as the zoning administrator, when you look at these applications, what process do you go through to decide if you will approve or disapprove or not?
We basically do a detailed research staff report in regards to what's the area of the property, the location, and we look at the size of the lot, we look at the elevations, all those stuff, and we just provide a recommendation to the board for the board to, in turn, make a decision.
Okay. So, just relearn here. So, given that, for example, setback was already at 10 feet, and now they asked me for 3 feet, for properties like this, why don't we just go ahead and just set it back 3 feet already, since it's a regular appearance? That makes sense?
Because it's already in the zoning ordinance, has been adopted that this is what the setbacks are requiring, they have the right for a special exception, because it is a narrow lot to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, because they cannot meet those setbacks to build on that lot, and if they come to a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals to get that relief.
What percentages, what percentage of applications that are aimed towards a setback are approved?
We pretty much have a, because of the new special exception that city council has approved to go into the zoning ordinance, we have received favorable results from that because of that. When it was simply a variance process, it was a more tedious process because of the hardships and the continued variances going before the Board of Zoning Appeals had to be adjusted to do that. So that's why the special exception for narrow lots came into play.
Okay. So, it's probably above 80%, 90%?
Yes.
So, why not create an ordinance that is automatically, I guess, improves this type of application?
Well, that would be something we have to go through from the city council and the planning commission to do that type of adjustment with that, to make that a more of a less of administrative approval from the zoning ordinance.
That's what I'm just trying to.
So the question is, why not change it, the setback based on the lot dimension, if it's a narrow lot, to have that be a different rule?
Correct. If it's already, if the applications are already approved, a high rate of 90%, you might as well change the ordinance to reduce the administrative burden, like you said, instead of, you know, having to keep coming to you. So, it seems like we're moving in a new direction, where 10 feet setback, 3 feet is okay, so why not have our ordinance reflect our new, you know, our new strategy?
Yeah. And then we have to consider the fact that, because all these lots are within the zoning district, so that means that those lots within that zoning district, they pretty much are able to meet those requirements. So if we were to take it down for that completely, that entire zoning district, you know, the ramifications would change.
May I make a?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Melvin, additionally, the individual site-specific evaluation of the cases allows the planning department to negotiate with the applicant and the builder to improve the quality of the unit that goes on the site with respect to building material, variation in roof lines, masonry product on the front, and so we wouldn't necessarily get that if it were by right used, this permitted in the underlying zoning.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. So you basically consider a proffer?
Well, they're not proffers, it's a special exception.
Okay. I understand now. I see what you're saying. That makes sense. Thank you.
And I have one quick question. As we talk about the innovation district, are we keeping in mind walkability and bike friendliness of this area? And has that been stated as a goal? I know it had been a goal in the past that came through planning commission to be a bike-friendly city. Are we taking that into account as we're looking at the innovation? Okay. Any other questions? I think that's it. We got a couple minutes for the?
Yes. Yes. Super excited. [inaudible] All right. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. I want to share with you that, or remind you, that in April, you directed planning staff to consider proposed amendments to our zoning ordinance regarding the regulation of both our event centers and our entertainment uses. And we are presenting to you today draft proposed ordinance language because we'd like your feedback on is this going in the direction that you believe is necessary to regulate this use? And if not, we want some guidance on how we could amend this, with the goal to bring before you as an action item at your July meeting, prescriptive ordinance language. I've asked Mr. Boone to help support this discussion with you today specifically to answer and address the question for why we're doing this. And so we're not jockeying back and forth from our seats. I'm going to ask that he provide commentary for the purpose of the proposed amendments from where he sits.
Okay. Good afternoon again, commissioners. The proposed zoning amendments for entertainment establishments and event spaces are being brought forth in response to a growing concern with the increasing number of venues operating as event spaces and restaurants with entertainment, slab entertainment. And we've seen and heard complaints with the impacts of excessive noise, large crowds, parking issues, and in some cases, violent activity going on in those property. So our goal is not to shut down nightlife, if you will, or stifle creativity, it's to establish clear and consistent and concise standards so that these businesses can operate safely and responsibly, and so that neighborhoods are protected from these disturbances. So that's the goal of these ordinance amendments for today.
Okay. So the teacher in me is going to ask that you stop reading that handout. So we took the time, and I took the time, to tab the specific pages that I want to refer you to as we get to that slide, okay?
You're so good. Thank you so much. Good teacher.
All right. So let's just start first, and just say the, just the quiet part out loud. And I'll admit that I do this too, right? What's the difference between the entertainment establishment and the event space, right? Because they both require a special use permit, and they all, the type of use associated with them is the same. And it's not. So, yeah. That's right. Now, I wanted to do this. You all didn't see this, but we did in October a presentation to the city council about event spaces and entertainment uses. And so the event space, I'm not going to just use layman's terms and not our ordinance language, that is a commercial space that someone like me or someone like you could enter into a lease agreement with a provider, an entrepreneur, to use that space to host a private event. Graduation ceremony, wedding receptions, baby showers, things of that nature. Some offer catering services, some don't. What is really important in terms of that use is that they typically do not have a liquor license. And so the lessy, the person who is leasing the space, can apply for and obtain a temporary ABC license to serve alcohol at that venue, all right? The entertainment venues, and in our community, they're typically restaurants who are asking for additional use to host live entertainment events at their venue, and that venue typically does have a liquor license, and they sell alcohol, all right? So that's important. Those are important distinctions. All right. So, you'll notice in the excerpts of the ordinance that we gave you, or that I provided, we have use-specific standards that are currently in our ordinance, Section 40-217. And I have highlighted, let's look at section G, use-specific standards for commercial uses, and the next page has a purple flag on it. So what we are proposing in the regulation of our ordinance is that we add specific, use-specific standards for the entertainment establishment and the event space. That's language that is not currently in our ordinance, right? So it would approve, and you agree that this is the direction that we should be going in, item G, use-specific standards for specific commercial uses, would add entertainment establishment and event space and specific requirements for those uses, all right? So the reme- in case and for additional use to host live entertainment events at their venue. And that venue typically does have a liquor license and they sell alcohol, all right? So that's important. Those are important distinctions. All right, so you'll notice in the excerpts of the ordinance that we gave you or that I provided, we have use-specific standards that are currently in our ordinance, section forty dash point two, two seventeen. And I have highlighted, let's look at section G, use-specific standards for commercial uses, and the next page has a purple flag on it. So what we are proposing in the regulation of our ordinance is that we add specific use-specific standards for the entertainment establishment and the event space. That's language that is not currently in our ordinance, right? So it would approve, and you agree that this is the direction that we should be going in, item G, use-specific standards for specific commercial uses would add entertainment establishment and event space and specific requirements for those uses, all right? So the remainder of our presentation is going to go over what those use-specific standards are. But we're proposing to modify section forty dash two, twenty seventeen of our ordinance, forty dash two, add forty dash two, five, five, six in our ordinance, which is revocation of certificates or permits that could be done by the zoning administrator, and section forty dash two, five, five, seven affects of revocation on our ordinance. And those last two, we're going to talk about at the very end. So look with me, the teacher in me, that the use-specific standards for entertainment establishments, those, that language should look very familiar to you because that language repeats the conditions that we include in almost every application for this specific So for entertainment establishments, the live entertainment has to be indoors per the definition as well as the conditions that we include in the use. We require that they be in compliance with the noise ordinance, which is not included in the zoning ordinance, but the city code and ordinances. We require that all entrances and exits are soundproof for the use. So that means that they would have to retrofit the doors and entryways for that to occur. Hours of operation, so I want to be very transparent here because this is a departure from what we've done before. We're proposing hours of operation from eight AM to midnight for all the uses, okay? And we're comfortable with that, even though most of the providers for the entertainment establishment ask for more than that. The use-specific standards of our ordinance include a provision for the applicant to ask the commission as well as the council to modify those use-specific standards, right? So unless an applicant requests it a modification, the end time would be midnight, and they can ask for a modification and the cause to support later time to close at the time of the application, and they would have to defend that request to the commission and the council, all right? You see the standard, we require the surveillance twenty-four seven of that operation that is not new. We've not received a lot of, about that being burdensome from applicants at all. The conditions require that there are no unreasonable off-site impacts. And by off-site impacts, we mean noise, we mean smoke, glare, vibrations, anything of that nature. And something new can always come up. I'm going to share this with you because it supports the comment that is a site-specific evaluation of each use. And so for a specific user, we receive complaints from adjacent residential property owners about loading and unloading for delivery of supplies, right? That's site-specific because that's not going to be impactful at every property. It really is going to be based on how close a venue is to a residential property and where they load and unload. Other picture in the slide, must have been becoming a law enforcement burden. That sounds subjective, but it really isn't because we can evaluate that based on complaints. We can evaluate that based on the number of police calls to a property and the nature of those calls.
Have we established those thresholds?
I'm sorry.
Have we established a threshold for a burden?
We haven't established a threshold for burden. I have some slides in here, I'm going to show you from the October presentation where the incidents really are not that frequent. Key standards, a zoning permit or certificate of occupancy are required for the use. We do that now, but I will tell you in a moment of complete transparency, we need them to go through our permitting process for that soundproofing part of the requirements to ensure that that's verified and if not verified, that it's done, that that's body of work is complete. occupancy limits for the building official, we actually just talked about that, and in being fair to the previous applicant, this has nothing to do with the previous applicant. We're going to do that whether or not you had an event space application on your agenda today or not. And maintenance of all required licenses. No repeated violations of local or state laws, no third-party promoters, and this is for our event space venue. The venue operator is the only operator on that site, right? So it wouldn't be, they can make that property available as an entertainment establishment for others. Rear doors can't be propped open, they're for emergency exits only. That, again, provides for managing off-site impacts, noise and things of that nature. So you want to be less than that from a controlled point of access of the property. We don't want repeated violations, you know, so, and, you know, when I was much, much, much younger, much, much, much younger, if you had some type of venue and the police came because it was noisy, you're only going to come to one, and then one morning and then shut down. Same principle. You're not going to have multiple opportunities to do the same thing. Those permits, not just for entertainment venues and event spaces, they expire in two years if no work is commenced in due diligence towards the operation.
So you're talking about behavior, right? That's my fear.
Which one?
We're talking about behavior promoters and the, you know, autopsy.
Yes.
So when you're talking about when the police came to the particular venue one time, was that addressing the behavior of the people who were...
Associated with the venue?
Yeah, like, you know, you can't stop, you know, how good of a owner, restaurant owner, entertainment you are, you just can't. So your thing is we come there one time, if somebody acts out, even if you had everything in control, you know, you had the police available, but somebody choose to be a butt wipe that day, and so the police gets called and then we shut the people down because somebody else got called for their action.
Second time. It would be the second. It would be potentially the second.
So I got to get punished for somebody else's actions, what you're saying?
Potentially. Potentially. If you'd hold on, just trust me for about five more minutes.
I just want to see where we're going there. I'm trying to follow you.
Understood. This is the October, the presentation that was done in October, so from two thousand and three to two thousand and four, the entertainment establish uses, so police reports, one, two, three, four, four in a year. So you take that four, you take twelve months, it's not one every single month. Is that, Ms. Glover, you said, is there a threshold? There is not a threshold established, but if we look at the frequency of events last year, it wasn't excessive.
But that burden is going to be business-specific, correct? If your establishment is creating a burden for police, but yours is not, I'm not penalizing everybody, just you.
I think that's reasonable. And like, I asked Bishop Curry, trust me, five more minutes, we're going to get to it. We're going to get there, okay? Five, not, it won't be five minutes.
I'm writing my questions down, trust me.
All right, keep me honest. Okay, so why? Why are we doing this? Or why are we proposing it? Why did we ask the planning commission in April for permission to pursue amendments to our ordinance to regulate the uses? And so we want to reduce neighborhood disturbances. We want to encourage the quiet and peaceful enjoyment of your individual property so that how I use my property is not a burden or impactful to how you want to use your property. We want to strengthen the accountability of each venue to control the activities that occur on their property by the patrons who visit. And we want to improve community quality of life and safety. Before we get to questions and comments, because the purpose of presenting today is to get feedback from commissioners, are we on the right track? Are we doing the right thing? So I want you to go to the information that was shared to you previously, one, two, three, four. Perfect, tab four is the last page, and it's the front side of the last page. So we're proposing to add two, an already existing section of the ordinance, so section forty dash two, five, five, zero authority already exists. And we're proposing to add item C. And while we will continue to tweak this language based on work feedback and more review by the city attorney's office, we're proposing to add language that allows the zoning administrator to order without limitation the discontinuance of any legal use of a land, building, or structure, the removal of illegal buildings or structures or additions, alterations, or structural changes, and discontinuance of any illegal work being done or other action or cessation authorized by this ordinance. So that's the piece where I say continue, just trust me for a little bit. So it's a decision that is made by the zoning administrator, apparently Mr. Trayvon Boone. It would not be wise of Mr. Boone to make a decision of that nature in isolation. I wouldn't do it, and I would be upset with him if he did that, okay? So currently, we do have a task force that is meeting regularly to discuss just enforcement issues, and I, it's my professional opinion that that is an appropriate body of professionals to discuss problems of this nature with. And it's represented by, well, tell us, tell us who's represented on that.
You have the fire department, police department, commissioner of revenue, building permits and inspections, Virginia Department of Health, ABC, all those entities make up that board.
So the last tab, it's on the backside of that page, we're proposing to add section forty dash two, five, five, six, and forty dash two, five, five, seven. The zoning administrator may revoke his zoning certificate if the recipient of a certificate is found to do any of the following: fails to develop or maintain the property, fails to abide by the requirements of this ordinance, fails to meet any additional requirements lawfully imposed in connection with the issuance of the certificate, like those supplemental use standards, okay? And then what is the effect of that revocation? It's the discontinuance of the use, all right? Did I meet my, my request, trust me?
You're under way.
All right. Okay, so now we'd like your feedback. We're going to listen intently. I'd like to go sit back down so that I can write your comments and notes down as we absorb your feedback on how best to proceed regarding this proposed body of work.
Please, Swami. All right, I do want to say thank you for looking into this. It's funny, I actually brought this up, I don't know if you recall this, back in the winter, as we started to see a few of these
Yes.
entertainment, not entertainment venues, but the...
The frequent use permits.
Yes, use permits picking up. We equated it to how we saw the same issue with the car washes just popping up everywhere. The two questions I had, they were actually, first one was about the outdoor entertainment. Well, let me take a step back. They were both about the casino, because I know that was pictured up there as an entertainment venue. Do they have two permits? Do they have like one that does allow them to rent out their entertainment hall to people who are fundraising?
I wasn't here, I'm sorry. So we're going to have to get back.
Okay, and I ask that because even my organization has an event coming up soon where we are selling tickets, so I'm just trying to make sure we aren't revoking something they already had in place and that would be problematic in the future for other groups.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's, you have the hotels and they have the banquet facilities with them that you can rent out. I'm thinking there's something probably on that why, you know, that's included with that.
Yeah, let's make sure that we have clarity on that in this so that it doesn't become confusion. Also related to that is outdoor entertainment. For example, the casino last year had a concert series that was outside. Is there a process for exceptions for that?
Conditions, conditions.
Okay.
And the supplement modification of the supplemental use standards through the use permit application process.
Perfect, well, those are my two questions. I feel like there's a third one, but I think that'll do good. Was there any other questions?
Yes, there is.
Yes, Mr. Glover.
I want to go back to what you indicated about the hours ending at, okay, twelve thirty.
Twelve.
I want to make sure that staff communicates thoroughly with the applicant that they can ask for an exception to that. In other words, the applicant doesn't feel like they're stationary, they don't have an opportunity to say, well, we really do need till two AM. That we want to make sure we let the applicant know so that we don't have the applicant saying to us, well, staff never said that we could ask for an exception to those hours. So that would be one of my main comments.
Okay.
Are those the exceptions? Because this makes me happy seeing this, but that's not what this says.
Are the slides, what is your question?
No, what I'm saying is, the eight AM to midnight is, that's not, my question is the exception. Is that a one-time thing or is it a blanket if I tell you, I mean, if I'm, if I'm an event venue and I have something and I want that to extend to two AM? Is that any event I have? Is that a blanket thing for every event I have or is it by event?
So in the application process...
Or is this just for entertainment? I'm sorry.
Well, we're proposing the hours for both, the event center and the entertainment establishment. So in the use permit application, the vendor, if this is approved, would have to adhere to midnight unless they made a request to extend the hours of operation, and then that request is vetted in the application process. And so they could say four times a year, or they could say two AM Friday through Saturday. Now, having said that, keep in mind that it's a use-specific evaluation, and that request for hours of operation could be impactful to whether the permit is approved or not, just depending upon how broad it is and how it might impact adjacent uses.
I really see where you're going with this, Mr. Glover. So if I'm a business owner, I have an establishment, and I agree to the eight to midnight, all of a sudden I have an amazing opportunity that comes up, a one-time opportunity. Is there a process by which I can have a one-time exception, not my standard exception?
You go through the process again.
You go through the process again, just for that one-time use?
Jesus. That's pain.
Okay. I think we just need to put it in there. Your mama told you that nothing good happen after midnight, y'all go home.
I don't go to bed. I would have made it two in the morning. Day or night. Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I just was going to say that most entertainment establishments, bars, clubs, et cetera, they're going to ask till two, but the other option, which is like the event space, they typically do kind of shut down at midnight. I've been to several throughout the city and they kind of, you know, you got to be gone by midnight. But I'm thinking what would stop them from asking for two because now they can kind of promote
They can.
Later parties.
We approved the two last month.
Okay.
Yeah, we approved the two AM last month for entertainment, or for a, what is it called? I keep getting confused.
I know.
I think that was an entertainment.
Event space, yeah.
Oh.
The event space on High Street, we...
A little suite for you venue.
Yes, we approved that one for the later hours.
Okay.
So they have that ability as it stands.
But the ones who, that work for the ones who are already established...
But the ones who, that work for the ones who are already established and are only till twelve, do they have to come back and go through the process to ask for 2:00 a.m.? Because we didn't make it available to them prior to now, right?
I'm gonna defer to legal for that.
Yeah, I think based on what's adopted, we'd have to analyze whether or not it applies to uses that have already been approved.
Okay.
So, we'd have to analyze that.
Well, point of clarity, they could have, in the past, already asked for till two, right?
Yes.
Right, so, so this doesn't, this doesn't
Change it.
This doesn't change what they had the ability to do before. This is just going forward, the default is midnight. Unless they, well, and the default before was whatever was recommended, I believe.
Right, yes. So, are we, are we, are we hearing that you'd like us to work more on the hours?
Yeah, and because, and here's, here's a question. I don't know if this has ever been considered, based on where it is, if it is zoned solely commercial
Proximity to residence.
Two, two a.m., knock yourself out. If you're in a mixed use, if you're where Clayton's used to be, and you got Green Lake, Agar, I don't care what you got going on there, midnight should be it. Sorry. If I live there, I don't even want it to go to then, but that's, if I've, if I've got to have a cutoff
But I did hear
You've got young families living there with babies, and just, no.
But we did prohibit parking in the neighborhood.
Correct.
So, that's one thing that should kind of help the business be able to go a little later, along with soundproofing, right? Also, and the parking that they already have is already established, it's kind of like grandfathered in, because it's a non-conforming use.
You said with respect to the Higginson Ferry Road
Yeah.
Property, yes, and we've recommended, staff has recommended approval of that one. After vetting all of the land use issues and potential off-site issues.
I feel like we're opening ourselves up for a whole lot of dissatisfied citizens when they look at something like this, and they say, "Oh, well, they're only allowed to go to midnight," but then all of a sudden, they're allowed to go to 2:00 a.m., and they're like, "Well, that's not what we were told."
That's not a change. So, they already could, they already could apply to go to 2:00 a.m. as it stands today, even before this is adopted, but there was no standard of midnight.
Okay.
So, now this is, before it was a standard of whatever was recommended per case.
Correct.
Now, it's a standard of midnight unless they ask to go later than midnight. And then it would be up to us to say yes or no.
To recommend.
To recommend yes or no. Not say, recommend.
And I, for me, I think that's a very positive face to put on Portsmouth to say, "Midnight is our standard, because we value the safety and consideration of our citizens above tax revenue," whatever it is. I just, to me, that looks like we've got our priorities a little bit straight.
Is it possible for us to look over this and provide suggestions at the next meeting?
So, my, my
No, please.
I want to just summarize the feedback that I'm getting. The primary issue is hours of operation. You're comfortable with supplemental use standards being prescriptive in the ordinance. Do you want us, are you comfortable with us advertising this as a public hearing item with this feedback, so that the process can move forward? Or would you like for us to bring it back as a work session item?
So, as a point of clarity to that, with it being advertised for a public, for a public session for next
For July?
For July, we will still have the opportunity to get feedback on it. It's not finalizing it at that point, it's just still progressing it, so that, let's say our feedback becomes minimal, we can then move even quicker, whereas we're not slowing it down by another month.
That's correct.
Can we, can we, okay, so you want to push this version out here? Can we at least have fourteen days for the commissioners to provide feedback, so that it could then, if bank staff decides be included in this, and then push out as a public work session to the
Why do we need fourteen days? Because we, we can still get feedback, you may push it out with the feedback we give today, you can still provide feedback. Like, it's not gonna finalize it next month.
Correct. So, my, my, my process, so you push this out, right? Yes, we can still get feedback, but it's not, it's not in there, right? We don't know how the language is going to sound specifically, but we give the feedback of fourteen days, we just give them fourteen days. If you decide, right, seven days, however many days you decide, then they can put that in there with the language, and then provide that to the public, so that we can have the public work session.
I, I believe either way is gonna give us the same result, because they can make it perfect, or they can make it a mess, and we're gonna still have feedback with them, we only have a couple minutes. We're still gonna have feedback for them come next month, when it is a public session. And when do you need to advertise it by?
Are you trying to have it for July?
Yeah.
It would be next week.
Yeah, I knew that was gonna be the timeline.
It's pretty quickly.
So, you can let them know by Friday? Think you guys will have a complete rewrite done by Friday, or?
Yeah, Friday, it can be, it can be the day of the meeting, you know, we can, because it's advertised does not mean that you have to act on it, you could defer it.
Okay. I didn't know how fast this process was. Okay, thank you.
And be respectful, probably a few minutes until next session, do anyone have any additional questions with us? Okay, then we will conclude this and move into the public session. Yes, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to a very important meeting today, Tuesday, June third, in the Portsmouth City Council chambers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. We will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Okay, ready? Six members of the planning commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the May sixth, twenty twenty-five public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we're in need of a motion.
Motion to accept.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Let's see, who was that? I heard a few voices. We'll go with Commissioner Taylor. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion, then the second, to approve the minutes from the May the sixth planning commission. You will be voting electronically. Give me one moment, guys. Just give us a second. Okay, yeah. The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, July the first, twenty twenty-five, at twelve thirty p.m., City Council Chamber, City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at one thirty p.m., City Council Chamber. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time, if you have not already done so. Our first public hearing item is U.P. dash twenty-five dash zero-two Port Norfolk, Coastal Virginia. Developers request a use permit for the development of five townhouse units on approximately zero point five six combined acres located at four thirty, four thirty-six, and four forty-two Douglas Avenue in the historic residential H.R. zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed residential uses. The properties are further described as Tax Map one seventy-six parcel eight, six, eight, eight point six, eight point seven, eight point eight. The staff coordinator is Patrice Branch. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Grady Palmer. My business address is two 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 Central Park Avenue in Virginia Beach. I'm an attorney representing the applicant. The applicant Coastal Virginia Developers is a Portsmouth-based developer and builder of residential homes. And so, what's before you today is a conditional use permit to, requesting approval for a multifamily building on one of currently single-family lots. Right now, the parcels are divided into three separate lots on which three homes could be built without having to get a conditional use permit. The reason that we're applying for the conditional use permit is to maximize the availability of affordable housing in this particular area. As you heard, it's a mixed residential designation on your comprehensive plan. There's a good mixture in the area of single-family homes, some, some older multifamily townhouse. We think that the need for newer, better-designed townhouse units fits and is appropriate for this location. If you can flip to the building elevations, there's the first building elevation. This has been approved by the Historic Preservation Committee, granted the certificate of appropriateness in April. Those are the non-colored elevations, and if you could flip to the colored elevations, you can see there, these are craftsmen's style that fit perfectly within the historic district. These will be five-unit, total of five units. Purchase price will be between three hundred and three hundred and forty-five thousand. I bought my first house for ninety thousand dollars, and I can't believe that that's what affordable housing is, but that is, you know, those price points are, you know, are relative to the fact that these are townhouses. So, if you were to build single-family detached dwellings, they would be more expensive, and there would simply be fewer of them. So, this maximizes the availability of affordable, affordable housing in the city of Portsmouth. So, that's, that's the reason that we're coming before the commission today requesting the use permit, so we can deliver the most amount of houses and units that we can at a, at a price that is as low as we can get it. So, that's the purpose of the conditional use permit. Here today on behalf of Mr. Bob Barnett, Mr. Billy Mann, who is here from Coastal, who can answer any questions that you have about this. I understand that there are, there are concerns, or maybe concerns, about why can't we just have single-family? But again, this makes housing more available at a lower cost. And so, with that, I'll stand by for any questions. We do ask for your approval. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U.P. dash twenty-five dash zero-two. I do have two registered speakers. As I call your name, please come up, say your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. The first speaker is Grady Palmer. That was him, he just spoke, okay. John Lefsey.
Good afternoon. My name is John Lefsey. I reside at two twenty-nine Mount Vernon in historic Port Norfolk. I've lived there twenty-eight years, and I chose to live in Port Norfolk because it's a historic district. Port Norfolk was designated a historic district in nineteen eighty-four. Since then, only single-family homes have been built in Port Norfolk, only. The HPC guidelines for new construction are silent on multifamily homes, but all words and all pictures refer to single-family homes. There are two sentences in the guidelines that are telling. First, new buildings ought to be compatible with their historic settings. And the second, care should be taken that the new design does not visually overpower its historic neighbors. If that doesn't overpower, what does? These townhouses are definitely not consistent with the guidelines or with their historic neighbors. These three lots were part of six that were created when the old Port Norfolk Elementary School was torn down years ago. And they are in historic, because Douglas Avenue is in the historic district. The developer will probably tell you that only one house on that side of the block, in the corner block, is historic. It shouldn't matter, the rest of those houses were built pre-nineteen eighty-four. And it's also important to note that the three houses adjacent to it were built by this same developer several years ago, with no question. So, this is all about two more units to be sold, and the prices that were just quoted, houses in our neighborhood are going for three hundred and fifty now anyway, and those three houses adjacent to it went for three fifty. So, the numbers don't make a difference. We, the Port Norfolk Civic League, urge you, urge you not to depart from forty-one years of history. For forty-one years, only single-family homes have been built in our neighborhood. We ask you to reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Donna Biggs. You state your name and your address for the record, and you will have five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Biggs, and I live in a historic neighborhood myself, which y'all haven't addressed. I, with Vine Farms. And this U.P. twenty-five oh-two in Port Norfolk is a historic district, okay? And we need to honor our history and the way things are built back in the past, because today, our children are suffering, because we've forgotten the past about relationships and working together, and having things look historical, and remember how we are the best. Southerners are the best, because we were formed with relationships and working together and self-sufficiency and all that. Well, that's gone. It's all about having something that somebody wants and saying, "Affordable housing." Nothing is affordable anymore. So, just having that and having to look at it every day? In my neighborhood, did they follow our historic element? No, they put vinyl boxes up, and I have to look at it every day I go by. Who wants to look at something? If you're a visual learner and an action person, and you go in your neighborhood and seeing that, and you see that our, our honor is being disrespected, just because the government says you have to live like that? No. We need to honor our neighborhoods and our history. That doesn't honor anything. What is it honoring? It ain't honoring us.
Commissioner Curry?
I just want to in the process of building this, because we do have to ensure that we are moving forward and preserving, but I just want to ask a question to them, what forty-one years of history are we preserving? That's the question I want to ask. What forty-one years of history are we preserving? Please tell me today. I would love to hear it.
We have five historic districts in Portsmouth. Only five, and they're part of what makes Portsmouth special. They really are. I know a lot of people don't agree with that, and that forty-one years is the forty-one years since we became a historic district, because prior to that, if you ride through our neighborhood, excuse me, there are tons of buildings that are, quite frankly, pretty ugly. Big square apartment buildings, and there's townhomes. The old Port Norfolk, the old elementary school on Maryland is now townhouses. But they predate nineteen eighty-four, and we turned the corner in nineteen eighty-four, and that's what we're preserving. The fact that since eighty-four, a lot of houses have been built, but they've all been single-family, and they've all been built to historic guidelines. So, that's what we're preserving.
Does that answer your question?
It has to answer my question, but I hear your answer. I hear you, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Melvin?
I just wanted to agree with Commissioner Curry. Yep, I, that, that answer didn't ask, that, that didn't answer the question. I don't understand. Someone that hasn't been raised in the city of Portsmouth, I don't know what the 41 years that we're trying to preserve here. So if anyone in the crowd knows specifically what history it is, that would be great. But just saying that, you know, we had a turn point in 1984 doesn't answer the question. What happened in 1984 that made this neighborhood a historic district? It seems like we already lost the history there. If anyone knows, that would be great to give the commissioners here a better overview. Thank you.
One moment, commissioners. We were, we're getting reports that there's some issues with the sound in, in the front, so I just want to check really quick with the technical team to see if the speakers are not working or something. So just one moment, please. Just say something for me, please.
Good afternoon.
I thank you all for granting that moment. We wanted to make sure we weren't having technical difficulties and everyone could hear us. Commissioner Jiggetz?
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong, did not the applicant already go before the historic preservation? Excuse me?
Yes.
And what was their input? What was their input?
Please, thank you.
I'm not asking from you, sir, with all due respect.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just trying to...
Planning Director?
Commissioner G., Commissioner Jiggetz, the Historic Preservation Commission did issue a certificate of appropriateness with conditions for the proposed use.
And what were the conditions, if you would tell me again?
The conditions were related to building materials and the design of the proposed townhouse units, and those have been reflected in the conditions for this use permit application.
Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-02. If there is anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. One moment. Commissioner Glover?
Can you hear me? I have a question for the developers. You presented this as five townhomes that would offer affordable housing. However, Mr. Lefsky pointed out that single-family homes in this area were selling in the same price range. Is that the same conclusion that you came to? And if so, why opt other than for financial gain? Why not build three historically accurate single-family homes versus the five townhomes?
Well, when we made the decision, the, the cost, when you compare the two, you have single-family, you have fewer units that are going to cost more than the duplex units. It's as simple as that.
Mr. Chairman, appearing to be no more speakers, this public hearing is now closed.
Okay, looking for additional discussion. Commissioner Melvin?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Russell, just for future meetings, if we have a applicant from the historic district, can we attain some correspondence from the historic committee about how this area is a historic district, is the history of it, and what made them move to approve the applicant? That would be very helpful. Thank you.
If there's no additional discussion, we are in need of a motion in a second. And please remember to hit your blue button to be called on for the motion. Commissioner Jiggetz?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to accept this application with the conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion and a second to approve UP-25-02 with conditions, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved five to one. Our next item, UP-25-05 Manor View. C. Hodges requests a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment at 1805 Hodges Ferry Road in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. The property is owned by ARS Enterprises LLC and is further identified as Tax Map 595, Parcel II. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. Staff Coordinator is Patrice Branch. This item was deferred from the May the 6th, 2025 Public Planning Commission meeting. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Okay, good afternoon, City Council. My name's Charles Hogan. And we are the co-owners of I Crave Restaurant, requesting entertainment permit. We asked for, last time we were here, we asked for an extension because, to address the concerns of the neighborhood and the civic league. So we held a meeting, we sent out flyers identifying when we would have it, where it was going to be. We even offered a tasting we provided for the neighborhood and the commission, I mean, the civic league. Excuse me, I'm trying. Okay, although the attendance was smaller than expected, the appreciation of those who did attend was greatly heartfelt and appreciated. One of the concerns was the parking, so we have talked to the adjacent building, 1805 owners, as far as additional parking. 1811, excuse me. The narrative was somehow misconstrued when the civic league thought was a nightclub we were trying to open up, which was cleared up also at the meeting. And basically, the rest of the narrative expresses our desire to operate a fun, safe, and neighborly restaurant. And our actions, I feel, we feel, have shown that we've tried to comply everything that was requested of us. And our true intentions have already been shown. So I just thank you for that and hope we accept the...
Commissioner Curry?
Good day, sir. Could you tell me, what was the outcome of that meeting with the neighbors?
For the individuals who did show up, their main concern was being, feeling confident that what we were trying to present did not reflect in any way or meaning of the, I don't know, the stigma of the past. Okay? We had good conversation. It was general, just like a family picnic. And the concern, like, the main one was extra, additional parking, not being cluttered up the neighborhood, things like that. So we addressed it. Everybody left happy, no further complaints, and actually, we even got a couple hugs saying thank you for, you know, clearing it up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you. So what date did this meeting happen?
Yes, 16th of May? 16th of May.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know, I saw some feedback from members in our comments that they enjoyed that opportunity to sit with you. How many people were there?
I'm not going to say it. Maybe eight? Eight to 10.
Okay. And how did you, how did you conduct outreach? You said flyers and what else?
I talked to one, Mr. Parent, who, Parrot? Who I thought was, who I found out was part of the civic league. I gave him a hard copy of any invitation. We also reached out to some other individuals individually, and were told that they would pass it on to the rest of the civic league and the HOAs.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Curry? Oh, one second, I'm sorry. Yeah, one more question. Sir, Sylvia, what was your name again? I'm sorry.
Anthony Cooper.
Anthony Cooper?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Correction, on the flyer itself, it was the 15th, so we are, I apologize for that. But I do have a copy of the flyer, and I think there's one that was submitted, so... But we did meet the obligation that we set forth when we extended, so...
Commissioner Curry?
Thank you so much. First, I want to say thank you for bringing business to Portsmouth. And I'm thank you for the opportunity to be able to supply and help with the community. I do understand the concerns of the community, and being that you guys have not had any mishaps, I understand, you heard, the hearts of the community also, to ensure the safety, their peace of mind, where they pay their mortgage, and their children, grandchildren, that they are able to live in peace and harmony. And I pray that you hear their hearts and that it's complied with, you know, as you guys continue, whether it's passed or not. But you do hear your neighbors, that what they're asking for.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-05. I do have a few registered speakers. As I call your name, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Claude Parent.
Good evening. I'm Claude Parent, and I live at 802 Arnold Palmer Drive, which is across the street from the establishment that we're talking about. To clear up something that Mr. Hogan said, I, I did go over and I did receive a copy of the flyer. I sent it to the, the lady that's in charge of the Green Lakes Concerned Citizen, and then she sent that out, that invitation out to all of the, of the residents that are on, that are on our, our list. I have spent 57 years as an educator. I was an administrator for Portsmouth Schools, and I was serving on the Portsmouth School Board for three terms. And my objective has always been to protect the children and also to protect the residents and the families of Portsmouth. I have lived in my residence for over 70, 57 years. This neighborhood of Green Lakes, Elizabeth Manor, and the Manor area, we have had, it's a very quiet neighborhood. People honor their, their history in that area, and we work together. I did go over to the restaurant, and I did receive the, as I said, I did receive the flyer. We are opposed when you're, I guess all of you, Mr. Fred Porter could not be here today, but he did send you all the information concerning the codes. And one thing he said, "The planning commission and Green Lakes residents need to know which code are being used to evaluate the use permit for 1805 Hodges Ferry." And it goes on to the International Building Code is being used to evaluate the property as a restaurant, then it's a restaurant with a capacity of around 80 people. This capacity would be reduced to 40 people if the desire is to fit within available off-street parking. If you evaluate the property and you, and you, the, it says to operate as an entertainment, that's pretty wide. The entertainment then gives him the opportunity to establish the occupancy of 125. As such, the related parking requirements do not fit within available off-street parking. On-street parking would be required in the, in addition. The building does not meet the requirements for a capacity certificate of 125 people using restaurant evaluation criteria. The residents of Green Lakes, Elizabeth Manor, and the Manor area, we do not want our community to have, when you say entertainment establishment, it gives him the flexibility to make this either the restaurant, which is currently a restaurant. Now, I know that very few people, he said eight or 10 people who did attend, there were about six people who did attend. Doesn't make any difference. The community is opposed to operating this as, as you've got an entertainment establishment that gives him the opportunity to operate it, hopefully, as he says, as a restaurant serving Jamaican food. But it also gives him the opportunity, a wider opportunity, and you can correct me, that he could go to 125. He cannot, you cannot fit 125 people in that. There will be off-street parking on Arnold Palmer Drive and also on Nottingham and all the, the streets that are adjacent to it. We have lived through this before, and the previous owner who had a pop-up shop, and they, they operated way beyond midnight. They went to 2:00, and the next morning, we had to get up and we had to clean up our, our street. In fact, they blocked my driveway, and I couldn't get out. If I had an emergency, I would not be able to get out. This is what he's talking about. This is the concern, Mr. Curry, that the community is concerned about. We are a very quiet, mixed neighborhood. We work together as a community, and we just do not want to see this become, quote, "a nightclub." And because I'm, I'm concerned, we're concerned, that when you pass an entertainment establishment, that you're giving him the... that you're giving him the opportunity to establish a nightclub, and we are opposed to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. A quick question for you, and I enjoyed our conversation last month as well, when we talked after the discussion. No, no, but I did have a question for you now. As, as one of the few attendees, what worries me is, as we ask them to reach out to the community, what do you attribute so few people showing up and actually hearing from them and understanding what they, I mean, because there, there's assumptions made.
Right.
A lot of assumptions had been made prior to this, and in part, and no fault of anyone's except everyone's, honestly.
Sure.
And what would you attribute, from your personal opinion, to so few people actually coming to hear from the individuals to get a clear understanding of, of what they were actually trying to do?
Well, in my case, I attended my, my grandson's graduation in Harrisonburg. The other community men, I can't answer for them. I think the community has, and there are people here from the community, and they were here, a lot of them were here in, in May, that they are opposed to having this established, establishment permit approved. If it's going to turn in, if you're gonna give them 125, you, I mean, he barely makes, with the restaurant being 80, there's not enough parking spaces for him to have, even a restaurant. Now, I live right across the street, so I see every day how many people. There are about five or six cars, and sometimes in the evening, there, there's nobody there. And I realize that he wants to make, he wants to make a living. I understand that. And the restaurant, I don't think has really caught on. Some people like Jamaican food. I talked to Mr. Hogan's, and I said, you know, that's, I mean, I can't eat, that, I've got reflux, so I can't really have that kind of food, but they were very nice and so, little combination.
Try the veggie.
Nice, nice people. I have no problems with that. I just don't want, we do not want this to be, as you say, entertainment and give them the flexibility of establishing a nightclub, not in the middle, when you've got, right down the street, you've got Green Lakes Baptist Church, then you've got Hodges Manor Elementary School, Manor High School, and then on the other end, you've got Lakeview Elementary School. So, we're a closed community, and we, we've just, I mean, even when we had Clayton's for years, we never had a problem with parking, they never parked on the street. I mean, Clayton operated for many, many years, and it was a great restaurant. If this is what they want to do, to have a Jamaican restaurant, that's fine. But we do not want to have, to have to deal with what we dealt with former owners. And he said, you know, I'm not, I didn't do, I'm not gonna do what they want to do. And he was confused because he said, "I didn't ask for it." He said, "This is the way the planning commission made him submit the permit." He said, "I just want, I just want a restaurant." And that's great. But we do not want it to be classified as entertainment, because if you do that, you're giving him the flexibility of going up to 125 and making it a nightclub, and that is what we are opposed to.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
I am very aware of restaurants. I'm a cook myself. I'm very aware of what's going in the city of Portsmouth. I've been here 38 years all my life. But we're coming here now to a, you're saying you don't want him to be like the rest, because now you are comparing him to something that happened before that he had no.
No, I mean, right.
You said out of your mouth that you don't want to have what you had before. And what you are doing now is almost a trauma dumping. I'm saying that what happened before is what's gonna happen again without even giving these people a chance. And if we're going to be a community and we're gonna work together.
Right.
We have to give people chances. We have to give people opportunities. And I understand, but we're familiar with our own comfort and what we're familiar with and all that good stuff. Life is changing. Culture is changing. And so, we have to come to grips in our world now that we cannot put onto them what happened in the past. We have to give everybody a opportunity. Because this is what this world, this America was built on, opportunity. Even though some of it was taken from us, we were built on opportunity. So we want to ensure that we are giving people a fair opportunity to be able to produce for their children and their children's children, just like you were able to do in education for your children and your children's children.
And I think you, Mr. Curry, I think you misunderstood. I was giving you the example of the previous owner, and they were, it was a pop-up shop, and they were selling marijuana until the community called the police, and that's a matter of record. And talking with, with Mr. Hogan's, the bottom line is that, that's not his, I'm not comparing, I don't want to compare him with that. We just, the community does not want to have all these cars parked in, down our streets, and all the trash and all the things that went on. We're just saying, we want, if he wants to operate a restaurant, that's fine. I've lived across the street, I've watched the number of people, there are not a lot of people. Next to him, which has nothing to do with him, is another venue where you can, you can rent, and a lot of people rent that for graduation parties, churches use it for, but he doesn't, he's not part of that. We've not had any problems with that kind of parking. We're just saying, we want our neighborhood to remain it as it is, and we certainly, I mean, we support whatever, if it's a restaurant, then it needs to be a restaurant. But I'm, my concern, and it's my concern, my concern is that, looking at the number for the last over month, looking at the number of people that have been at his restaurant, I think that if he would, if he wants to make a living with it, then if he goes, if you approve the entertainment and it goes up to 125, which there's no way you can, you'd be violating your own code. The bottom line is, we don't want a nightclub, sir. And when you talk about culture changes, yes. And I am, anyway, my beliefs are different, and I think we've talked about our, our Christian beliefs and what we feel are of integrity, and, and I've had a nice conversation with Mr. Hogan's. And if he says that he's gonna establish a restaurant and serve food, I mean, that's fine. He's gotta adhere within the code, within the code. But when you approve an entertainment, then you're giving him the right to go beyond the capacity. And he got 125, which would be basically, he could, it could be, it could be a nightclub. That's what we're opposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, sir, for coming up here. I know it's hard to come up here and see how passionate you are, but I have to disagree that the amount of numbers of people attending the owner's meeting doesn't matter. Ms. Biggs over there, she comes up here every planning meeting, she says that the citizens should self-govern, which I agree to that, to attend. So, in my opinion, everyone from the Civic League, or majority, should have went to the owner's place, and you all should have created a compromise for you to decide what should happen and what should not happen. If it came up before us, would have been an easy vote, and ultimately, City Council would decide. But that's not the case. Only eight people went, and now we sit here with a planning commission and City Council has to decide. So logically, we should approve, based on the facts, it meets the comprehensive plan. All the concerns that you all had were not, did not pertain to this owner. Emotionally, the neighborhood doesn't want this.
Correct.
They don't want this.
I mean.
But, hold on, let me.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, emotionally, City Council has to ultimately decide if they're gonna approve that, right? But for you all to not go there, or even in your, even you say you went to a graduation, you all could have, you know, asked to do another day, and all came, came over, right? There needs to be some level of accountability here, where if the Civic League does not want it, they have to meet this person in the middle and figure out what's going on here. For us, if planning commission is to deny, based off all the facts that we gathered from the city, and that the agenda that we denied, that it's gonna be a nightclub that keeps getting pushed, it's just, it's not a nightclub. We already covered it at the first meeting. Over eight members, over 30 members came to the meeting last month, but none attended his meeting. It doesn't make sense to me. Are we, are we, is this important? Is this matter important? Is it not important? I see you, you treat this very hard, and you're up here fighting to not let it happen, but logically, it doesn't make any sense. On an emotional level, sure. But logically, this follows comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is about what the city of Portsmouth wants, not what your Civic League or your neighborhood wants, but the city of Portsmouth. So if you believe that it needs to be changed, then when we do have the review, or we do revamp our comprehensive plan, then you can come to the meetings that the planning staff puts out, and you can explain that to them. But logically, it's just hard to really deny this while giving the owner opportunity. All I hear is based off of emotion, and everything that was considered in these comments, which I read, every single one of them, had the same, same concerns that were basically went over and were not towards the owner. So I'm just having a hard time, you know, being on your side here, when is this an emotional state?
Well.
If I could just, just a point of clarity for, for both sides. Our job as a planning commission is to talk about land use. Even whether we approve, deny, it's still, we recommend, we make a recommendation.
Correct.
And our recommendation goes to City Council. So I just want to make sure that point of clarity is provided for everyone.
Correct.
So, whether we approve, whether we deny, we approve based on land use.
Exactly.
Deny based on land use. And then, a lot of the items for which the concerns are coming in do get addressed at the City Council level as well. So I want to make sure that that point of clarity is made. I know there's two additional commissioners that did have comments, and I just want to clarify, your comments were from Mr. Parent and not just in general, because there will be tougher in general as well.
Exactly. And to clear up something you said, it was my understanding when we left May 6, that it would be, Mr. Hogan's would reach out to the community. Because I clarified that with our, the chairman of our group, that it was Mr. Hogan, he did, he did. And I was with Mr. Porter, and he came over, and I talked to both of us, and he said, "I have a flyer." And I said, "Well, let me, I'll just walk over there and, and get the flyer," which I did, and I sent it to our chairperson that sends everything out, and it was sent out to the, the community. I can't answer why we didn't have enough people. I just can answer for myself where I was, but I can't answer for them. But I do know the voices have been heard from us, from the community, all three communities that we are opposed to entertainment establishment, if it gives them the opportunity to have a nightclub. Thank you very much, and God bless you. Thank you.
I have a question for the restaurant owners. When the flyer was made and the invitation was extended, how was that extended to the community? Were those mailed out? Were they put on a community Facebook page? How was that communicated to the residents?
It was like more one-on-one, like Mr. Parent. He was presented a hard copy. There were a couple other members of the resident or the other areas. I can name them specifically, who were also given. And they were associated with the HOA, the Civic League of the prospective areas, and was told by them that they would put it out.
But you put the onus on them to communicate. And I'm not, I'm not judging.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not judging, I'm just, I just want to make sure I've, I've got this. So there was no outreach to say, "Please RSVP, we would like to do this on such and such a date. If you can't come, maybe we can pick another date, or maybe we could do it on more than one occasion." That's all, I'm just, this whole question of attendance or whatever, I'm just, I'm just.
Okay.
You're, you're telling me you spoke to a handful of people, a handful of people showed up. Your assumption was that this handful of people was associated with larger groups, and you were counting on them to kind of spread the word for you. Is that accurate?
No.
Okay.
No. What, no, let me go back. If it's written out, okay, so my question, my answer to her.
Well, no, quick point of clarity, because this was stated earlier, that it was shared in the community newsletter, right?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I heard them say that.
Okay, so, my response to you is this. The first rea, the main reason we even extended it to this is because of all the individuals that were present the last time, okay? We made a commitment. We held up our end of that commitment. You're seeing change in dates, and had we got any type of adequate response, okay, Mr. Parent, he has come up here and he speaks for the three other communities, okay? So, what he tells me, I will take care of, I will pass it on.
I'm sorry.
I take him at his word, just like when I tell him what our intent is.
Okay, and, and I've, thank you. And I certainly did not mean for that to be, to come across as confrontational, and I apologize if it did.
Okay.
But what I heard Mr. Parent say was that you have verbally given him some assurance that this isn't gonna be a nightclub, we're operating a restaurant to kind of allay the concerns of the community.
The narrative has already been, the adjustment of time, we ask, we have things like open, open mic, maybe karaoke, okay? We're not trying to make it a nightclub. That was one of the problems. They keep bringing up the past. We're not the past, we're the present. We're trying to make a future out of it, and we're trying to be good neighbors in doing it. But every time, what I've heard was speculation, assumptions. And basically, he called me a liar. That's how I took it, because I already told him, explained we talk man-to-man on what our intent is. He keeps talking about 125 capacity. We're not licensed for that.
Okay.
So why would we even go and violate something that we're trying to get? So, yeah, I am kind of upset.
Okay. And, and, and I understand there's a high level of emotion on both sides. I think a lot of it has been a lot of miscommunication, and hopefully, you know, as was just mentioned, we're, our job is to say what is legal, feasible, what falls within the plan of the city. That's what we're here to approve or disapprove.
Okay.
Or recommend, next step at City Council. I don't, I understand the residents' concerns. I don't think, for me, I have enough, to, I don't have enough reasons to say, to vote against approving what you, has been asked. I would encourage all of the residents of Green Lakes, Elizabeth Manor, surrounding areas. If you want your voices heard, you need to be at council. That's, that, this is your due process. So, and the other part of that is, is a gentleman trying to make a living, give him a chance.
I, I just had two questions.
Wait, I got one more before you.
Okay.
Commissioner. Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Jigget. We got you down on the list, so you were next. Commissioner Jigget.
Thank you. Just to be clear, for me, because I recall when this establishment was Clayton's, the seafood restaurant, and it was a very nice establishment. Your vision going forward for your Jamaican restaurant, you'll be offering Jamaican food, and you'll be having karaoke. Am I, am I interpreting this correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything else that we need to know about what your, your vision and your plans are?
No, outside of, our menu is a little bit more extended. It's not just Jamaican, we will have American, you know, food on the menu also. And as far as the entertainment goes, that would be pretty much like there's, if there's a birthday party, planned events, and that's it.
Thank you so much for your clarification. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Taylor?
All right. You guys took over this building earlier this year, right?
Yes.
And you heard the concerns about the parking, like, bottom line, they just don't want your patrons to park throughout the neighborhood, and we understand that that was from a past experience, from an event that had nothing to do with you guys whatsoever.
That's correct.
So are you gonna be able to comply with keeping your patrons parking between those two buildings? Because I heard you say you reached out to the establishment next door for additional parking in addition to what you guys already have.
Yes, ma'am.
If need be.
If need be.
Right.
If it spills over to that, they're, okay. If it spills over to that, they're okay with letting you use their parking spaces to keep people from parking in the neighborhoods.
Also, if we have an event, um, we will have to monitor the amount of people that do come and we'll have security on there. And we already plan on having additional to literally, physically walk the area to make sure.
Sure.
That no spillage, no illegal parking in a residence, anything like that. The effort's already in place if it comes to something like that.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Our next speaker is Eric Adams. Come forward, state your name and your address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, planning commission members. My name is Eric Adams. I live in the 700 block of Berkshire Road in Elizabeth Manor section since the 90s. I was unable to attend the last month's meeting on May the 6th, but I did provide my concerns via email. I did however, watch the public hearing and the planning commission meeting on YouTube, and I did so with the closed captioning so I could capture everyone's words. I would like to touch on some of the, some of what Mr. Melvin said. Mr. Melvin read citizens' concerns, and I quote, entertainment venue brings crime to the area and the surrounding neighborhood, end of quote. Mr. Melvin then said, do we have a report in the city of Portsmouth that shows crime rates for entertainments pertaining to entertainment establishments, end of quote. Mr. Melvin then said, and I quote, without the data, not really sure how much crime or if any comes to this area. Comm, right? So what needs, what we need something to compare to, end of quote. So I did some research for you and I would like to give you two locations. You don't have to pass that down. Of the police calls that have come since 2020 to 2025 for that location and also another location that's a restaurant and has, uh, entertainment as well. Okay, so I decided to do a comparison contrast with a location at 1805 Hodges Ferry Road and 107 Chawan Drive, which is Lisa's Restaurant and Lounge, which is approximately 1.6 miles from each location. The data is very interesting. Some of the concerns that were brought up were about the parking and about the traffic, not to mention the crime that comes with an entertainment establishment. So if you look at the Lisas, I know we're comparing the two, so I wanted to answer Mr. Melvin's question with the last meeting. So if you look at Lisa's Restaurant in 2025, as of May the 29th, there have been 41 calls for service. 27 of those have been for parking violations. One of those is where another, uh, where someone from Lisa's Lounge was actually telling people to go park in another business when they didn't have permission to. We got disloyal conduct twice, trespassing, firearm violation, loud party public, uh, domestic assault, auto accident property, assault where a male pushed a female into a wall. We got an unconscious person. We also got a complaint where there was too much people at that capacity. In 2024, we got a total of 42 calls for service. Nine of those were parking violations. We got an assault, two calls for unconscious person, we got a suspicious person auto twice, we got gunshots fired, loud party public, larceny twice, burglar alarm, firearm violation armed, breathing problems, and we had two hangup calls where the police had to go there. They also had a robbery, individual stolen vehicle overdose, and they also had destruction of property, which was a flat tire. So at this current location at 1805, as of this year, we've had 19 calls for service, okay? As of May 19th, so we've had 19 calls already for that location, 1805, at Hodges Ferry Road. Okay, 15 out of 19 of those have been between the hours of 9:00 PM and 3:00 AM. So you can see where the citizens are concerned because we see a, a pattern here, okay? In 2024, the same location, it had 32 calls for service, and out of those 32 calls, 25 of those were after 9:00 PM. And again, we got traffic problems, intoxicated person, medical problems, overdose, we had three juvenile problems on May 8th, 9th, and 10th of 2012, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in the evening time. We've had fights, larcenies, seizures, narcotics and alcohol violations, and it, and it goes So at the hearing also, and I, and I apologize if I pronounce your name wrong, is it Ms. Jenkins?
Jiggetts.
Jiggetts, okay. Uh, you mentioned, you mentioned on, at the public hearing meeting of having to propose five or four security personnel, and Mr. Hogan's was going to hire state certified that are going to carry weapons and legally trained to use them. My question is if Mr. Hogan stated at the end of the public or the planning commission meeting, he doesn't want to stay open past 12:00 AM, and I'm, I'm quoting him, "The main goal is to have a family-oriented safe place for, for the neighborhood and friends and have good food, have a drink, and go home." Why do we need so much security? Why would we need that? So if you also, if you've been to the 7-Eleven up there, which is literally 25 yards from that location, we have a piece of equipment from the Portsmouth Police Department that is a, it's got cameras, it's got a blue light flashing every 10 to 15 minutes, it's, it's letting you know that there's, you know, that you're being monitored, and that's just right next door. So we have a lot of crime in that area, and that's what we're concerned about. To answer Mr. Melvin's, uh, you said about 15 minutes ago, you said, where's the compromise? The compromise would be let's, let's run a successful restaurant and then let's revisit this.
Your time's up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, sir, for listening. It makes me happy when someone comes up here with actual data, um, to back their claim. So thank you for listening. I'm glad you were able to, um, give these results. Just so, uh, planning staff, do you have this information here? Is it possible for us to add this on record and then verify, um, if this is correct so that we can send up to, uh, city council? Um, and then I just want to make sure, uh, the current owner, he came into his, uh, building when? What, what date was that? I think we said that. He started operating when? What day, what month was that?
I believe they said January.
January? Okay, so here's 2025. So the business here said, so in the business column here, I don't think anyone has his form, but it says that it's Clayton's Rest.
And Clayton's hasn't been around since December of 2015, so the city probably needs to update the records.
Correct, so that's 1811, right? It was 1805. I think in the, in the work session, we said that was 1811. So Clayton hasn't been.
Yeah, some of these.
We're the next door.
Some of these, some of these records aren't updated as regularly.
Correct, that's why I just want to get this proved by city and police, uh, department, whatever we need to ensure that this is factual. Um, so Clayton's Rest, so it hasn't been in service for a while.
Correct.
Glad you showed me this. With the current owner wanting to provide security, it should, not 100% sure. To gate some of these problems that have been occurring in the, in the past. Now, it's for us to find out. Correct, current, yep. So right now, the owner doesn't have security there, correct? But with, if we do pass this amendment, there would be security. Now, hopefully, with the security, I think you said about four to, about three to five security, uh, members up there, that it would stop what's happening here, uh, at Clayton's, at Clayton's Rest. Who knows? But I'm happy that you listened and you provided this information and, you know, I think, I drop here as a planning mission, you know, we do our best and to advise city council. So now they have this information here, our planning staff go back and verify this and we can determine from there. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time. Commissioner Curry?
I, I hear a statement about the security, but let me help you in clarity. I think everyone here is smart enough to understand, it don't matter how many security guards you have, um, how many police officers you have in the city of Portsmouth, you can't stop everything. And you can't blame everything on one person. People have a mind of their own, and that's why we call the police, because people decide to do what they want to do outside of the law or limitations. Um, so I understand about why would you want to have that much security? He hired that much, much security to make comfort to you all, and you guys are still not satisfied. So what else you want to do to hide National Guard, um, to, to minimize here? People still make decisions on their own, whether you like it or not. You, you, whether you like or not, people are grown and they make their own decisions. They make their own decisions. The police can't stop robbers. We have a high crime rate in Portsmouth right now, and they're giving us speeding tickets instead of starving murders. So if the Portsmouth Police Department can't solve and get stuff done in here, you know, people do what they want to do. So I'm gonna say this again, we have to give an opportunity for people to have a chance, a fighting chance in the city of Portsmouth.
And Mr. Curry, I do agree with you, and that's why I said the compromise would be for the restaurant.
We're not honoring you, just sit back there, have a seat, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donna Biggs. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, I'm Donna Biggs and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Portsmouth. This meeting is really about protecting the people who want to start a business here. That's what it's all about. You're here to protect this business owner so that he can make a living in a nice environment and help folks. That's what it's all about. So we're trying to protect him. So we look at everything for his benefit to protect him. And so I did research, like the other fellow. Uh, I went to the, um, I wanted to know where the address was. 1805 Hodges Ferry Road. Now, I might have the wrong address looking at it, cause that ain't what I saw when I went to 1805 Hodges Ferry Road. And I got the deed from the, um, land and deeds at the courthouse to make sure I was getting the right address. And there was two parcels on this address. And, uh, the real estate agent that sold him this address lives in a mansion. How about that? Making money off the people. All right? So there's two parcels in the deed. And the parcel one, under the exhibit, was the beginning of Hodges Ferry is at State Route 696. And the intersection of Airline Boulevard, so it's a lot of traffic. The property was conveyed to First Step Incorporated by the deed, May the 6th, 1967. And really, it's talking about footage. So if we look at the footage and looking at the parking, and then understand what kind of environment are they going to have for the people, because it also talks about space. So it's really, uh, multiple things to think about to help this owner have a successful business. And I didn't know that it was a Jamaican restaurant that he has. And that's great, cause I went to Jamaica and boy, can they cook good food. And so I, I encourage it. But he has to be protected. And y'all talked about space and everything and, uh, whatever events and all like that in your, uh, commission meeting. So y'all have all the information to help the owner now. So we gotta look at everything. What about the parking? And how it's coming off Airline Boulevard? So you're gonna have traffic going, really. And you know, traffic today, people don't know how to drive, excuse me, they ain't know how to drive, but their foot is on the pedal. Um, so we gotta protect the owner. And the parking is an issue, the traffic is an issue. Now, how can we help this man, this business develop so that it can be successful with that all this backtalk I'm seeing from one of y'all commissioners?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash 25 dash 05. I have no other registered speakers, however, if there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, my name's Coleman Young. I live in the 600 block of Denwoodie Street. Just because I got gray hair, please don't prejudge me what I'm, what I'm gonna say. Um, I'm in full support of the two, two owners of this restaurant there. I mean, they're excellent, uh, individuals and, you know, as a planning commission, okay, you're, you're all concerned with planning issues. And what I've heard from the work session and also here are three objects. One is, is parking, one is noise, and, and one is, um, violent behavior. So let's take it, the parking was, was answered because of a non-conforming use, they can continue with that with any modification. The, uh, noise, we're, we're talking about, uh, open mic, karaoke. You don't have a decimal, uh, access in this involvement. And then there's violent behavior. Let's talk about violent behavior. You've seen these two gentlemen come up here. These, these two guys, do they impress you as being 20-year-old with flashy clothes, being a hustler for a nightclub? No, they just want a business, they want to do a low-level idea in, in, with the entertainment use for, uh, open mic and karaoke. I didn't open like, it's a very, you know, basically, the people that came there once enjoyed singing, they wanted to do it in front of a group. They, uh, or they might be inspiring artists, who knows? This might be the springboard for some, another native Portsmouth that goes in and be successful. Why are we gonna deny that to one of our citizens in Portsmouth? This is not a big, you know, th- these two guys are not gonna, uh, be able to, if, if Sean Coan's, uh, daddy was, was, was free, they're not gonna hire him to come walking through the restaurant and have people pay money and jam the, the parking lot. All they want to do is open mic and karaoke. Um, you look at karaoke, these aren't 20-year-old troublemakers, they're 35 and up, they come in groups of maybe two couples to get together, have a couple drinks and sing among their friends. Pure entertainment. Uh, the, the notice, you know, they did their part. They, they gave, they gave it to a member of the civic league to give the information out. Uh, I mean, I saw the, the video last month, there's a, a good turnout of opposition. What happened to personal initiative? They have a phone number that's available 11:00 in the morning until closing, you could pick up the phones, excuse me, is the, is the community, uh, community meeting being held? And if it is, when is it? What happened to their personal initiative? Why is it, they have to, they did their part. They notified the community, and there was a poor turnout. So why is it they come here to the, to a public meeting to complain, but then when's the time to sit down and negotiate and talk and compromise, which he did? He, he's limited it to Thursday night from 8:00 to 12:00, he's gonna provide security, you know, you, you don't have anything to worry about. I mean, I, I worry about him because the community's got their eyes on him, and there's no way he's gonna be able to stay out of line. If he does, you know, I, I know and you know, they'll be down here complaining. All he wants to do is provide food and, and simple entertainment to people. And I certainly would strongly urge you to look at the facts and recommend that he get approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash 25 dash 05. If there's anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner Curry?
I so moved. I also move to approve UP-25-05 with conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we have a motion from Commissioner Curry and a second, a motion from Commissioner Curry and a second from Commissioner Melvin. Madam Secretary?
You will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, is there any additional business? No chair. Dr. Russell, is there any additional business? All right, thank you. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.